Good evening and welcome to the Wallingford Public Schools Special Board of Education Meeting for Monday, December 20, 2021. Call this meeting to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as you are able for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
May we please have a roll call with Mrs. Lavell.
Ms. Valensson?
Here.
Ms. Castelli?
Here.
Corso?
Here.
Ms. Lavell?
Here.
Ms. Val?
Here.
Ms. Ratchio?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Reynolds is unable to attend this evening.
Mr. Ross?
Mr. Ross may be late or he may not be able to attend this evening either.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Seven members present in board.
Thank you. Student Board Representatives, Lyman Hall, Erin. Good evening.
Things at the school have been slowing down as we're getting ready for the holiday break. However, there are things I still want to share with you. There are a few updates from the College and Career Center. There were classroom lessons for the sophomores where they completed career interest profilers and career surveys for Credit for Life. Special ed LSB classes were held, which were lessons exposing students to post-secondary options. And onsite decision day was on December 14th, and 30 acceptances were delivered to Southern, Central, University of Hartford, Quinnipiac, and University of New Haven. The National Honor Society wrapped up their holiday forgiving food drive on the 10th. As a school, we collected 3,250 items total. Members of the National Honor Society helped transport all these items to the drop-off area at the parking rack. Student Council donated toys to Salvation Army. People went out and bought toys with money donated by the Student Council members, as well as the club in general, and toys were bought for all ages, from toddlers to pre-teen. Today was the start of a spirit week in order to get students excited for the break. Today was a wear red day. Tomorrow's tacky Tuesday where we wear holiday socks and headwear. Wednesday is winter wonderland, and we wore blue and white and snowflake apparel. And then Thursday is festive outfit day where we will wear our best holiday outfit. It's a good way to bring the school together and bring some spirit before we go out for break. And then winter sports, including hockey, basketball, boys swimming. Indoor tracks started right after Thanksgiving. The student section, called the wall mob, has been showing out to many of these games and participate in many themes such as whiteout and blackout, the first two hockey games, and will continue to support the athletes during their games. I hope everyone has a happy and healthy holiday break. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. From Mark Tishian, Paul, and Esha.
Good evening, everyone. Unfortunately, Paul's not able to make it, so it's just me today. But throughout the month of December, Student Council has been running the annual Toys for Todds Drive, and we collected unwrapped toys for children seven and under, and we donated those, and hopefully that'll bring some holiday cheer to children. We also concluded our food drive and donated hundreds of cans to Master's Manor. And we held our onsite decision day on December 13th, where students were able to find out their decisions face-to-face with an admissions officer. We are very proud of our 44 acceptances to local Connecticut colleges. The Sheen Music Department also held their winter concert on December 15th, and the Students Against Destructive Decisions Club organized their annual door decorating contest in advisory with the theme "Avoiding Holiday Hazards." And for upcoming stuff, students are excited to take a much well-deserved break, and we have some exciting activities planned for the days leading up. We plan to hold our annual variety show on December 22nd, and the day before break is our holiday sweater contest. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Esha. Erin and Esha, thank you for keeping us informed about activities at Lyman Hall High School and Mark Tishian High School. Have a wonderful holiday break and a happy new year. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is presentation and awards. I'm going to take a little license just to read a statement that I would like to share with my fellow board members. So before I begin the remarks about our outgoing Board of Education members, I would like to take the opportunity to thank each and every board member for their efforts over the past term. Each of you is an elected volunteer, determined to serve our students and our community as a Board of Education member. Two years ago, we had no idea that we would be facing a worldwide pandemic when we were sworn in. The members of this board have attended countless meetings and reviewed and approved in-person learning, hybrid learning, remote virtual learning plans, different graduation options for our students striving to find a balance between providing meaningful graduation ceremonies while adhering to the health and safety protocols necessary to address the COVID-19 pandemic. We became familiar with terms such as executive orders, synchronous and asynchronous learning, daily positivity rates, social distancing, reentry plans, memorandum of understanding, and memorandum of agreement. During this term, we said goodbye to a long-term and a longtime superintendent, hired a new superintendent, hired a new assistant superintendent for personnel, hired a new principal for Highland School, and a new curriculum coordinator for science and technology. This is a sampling of some of the items that board members addressed this term. All in all, a very busy two-year term. Every board member participated to the best of their ability while juggling their own personal and professional lives. It has been a pleasure working with each and every one of you for the benefit of our students, our school system, and our community. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for all of your help and dedication. Our first outgoing member from the Board of Education that I'd like to recognize is Mrs. Autumn Allenson. Mrs. Allenson, a newcomer to the Board of Education, served as our operations committee chair for the past two years. She asked questions, especially about our finances, and expressed her ideas in a frank and honest way in an effort to improve our school system. She was also the Board of Education's representative to the STEM Steering Committee and took a keen interest in environmental preservation as a member of the Electric Vehicle Bus Committee. Mrs. Allenson will now share her time and talents with our town as a newly-elected town counselor. Thank you, Mrs. Allenson. I think Superintendent Belizzi has a remark.
I do. Before I continue on, I too want to just address everyone before I start to talk about Mrs. Allenson. I want to take a few minutes just to honor all four of you who volunteered so much of your time and effort to support the students and staff of Wallingford Public Schools. Together, you've helped move this district forward despite a host of challenges, including those presented through the nearly two years of COVID-19, as you've done it all with grace, dignity, and integrity, all out of the devotion you have for this community, its children and the families. On a personal note, I want to thank each and every one of you for the support you provided me in my role as principal of Pontill School, and then assistant superintendent for personnel, and then to my current transition to superintendent. I'm always aware that the decisions you made and suggested were founded in what is doing best in the interest of students and staff. So thank all of you for that. I appreciate it. To Mrs. Autumn Allenson, it's been a pleasure getting to know you and working with you these past two years, from contract negotiation teams to chairing the operations committee. I've enjoyed collaborating with you, and I look forward to continuing to work with you as a town council member. One of the wonderful traditions that Dr. Menzo started was taking books and making sure that we are able to donate one in your honor. So one of the books that I suggested for you is called Line and Scribble. And this book, and I'll kind of hold it this way if you could see me over the (laugh). It's a picture book that celebrates imagination and friendship through simple shapes. So I think what I loved about this book so much is it goes through a story of friendship that embraces differences instead of competing, and it emphasizes imagination, creativity, and art, and how we can see the world and change the world through all of those things. So it really has a lot of recognition of friendship and connections throughout it, and it just made me think of you. So this book is going to be dedicated in your honor to Moses Wy Beach Elementary. I will pass this on to you, and we have a little something for you as well.
I don't know if other board members would like to remark, or if Mrs. Allenson would like to say something. Mr. Votto has indicated he would like to remark.
I just wanted to say, Autumn, it's been a pleasure also to work with you while on the board. I've always appreciated your input, even though we might have disagreed once in a while. It was fun, and I loved your poignant questions, and I wish you luck as a new member of the town council. Keep in touch.
I want to, sorry, excuse me. I want to thank everybody. Thank you, Mr. Votto. Thank you, Mrs. Belizzi, and thank you, Mrs. Lavell, for your kind words. You do still have representation in the town council, and it's going to be, it'll be an amazing transition and ride moving on from Board of Ed to town council. I am really excited to represent the town in a new way, but sad, and everybody who knows me well knows that I was really on the fence for a very long time about whether I wanted to move on from Board, right up until basically July. So I have loved working with you all, whether we agreed or disagreed. We had a lot of laughs, and we had wonderful conversations, and there's no growth in agreement. So I think it's better to disagree occasionally and to raise new points and bring your awareness. So thank you guys very much, Mrs. Castelli especially, for being my vice chair, but really my mentor on the operations, because you kept me in line when I was missing Robert's rules, and you're truly a wonderful support, and I appreciate you very much for that. And also on negotiations, because you're definitely the professional, spreadsheets and all. And Mrs. Lavell and Mrs. Ratchio, I cannot thank you both enough, because you guys have been my mentors that I come to when I'm either freaking out or wondering what the heck is going on, or I had so many questions in the beginning, and even as we moved through COVID, so many questions about what life was going to be like as we kind of returned to things, and I was really, really happy to have you both on my team. So thank you so much, everybody, for all of your hard work, and the full board has done an amazing job, in my opinion, and we all should be proud of ourselves. Thank you.
Oh, Mrs. Ratchio.
Autumn, I just want to share that I think you've brought an authenticity to your role on the board. You shared personal stories. You've never been afraid to ask questions. I love the questions you've asked, because you've brought it to a different level of everybody needs to hear what the questions are and not just take for granted that because you know something, somebody else also knows it. And the way in which you've done it over the past two years is very commendable. So thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Other remarks? Mrs. Purcell?
No, I just want to say good luck in the next thing. And I'm excited to have somebody with the Board of Ed experience, most recent Board of Ed experience, on the town council. I think you'll do a good job.
Mrs. Castelli?
So Autumn, thank you for those kind words, but totally unnecessary. You rocked as far as running operations. Your reports every month were phenomenal, and I was always amazed, even though (laugh) I was very grateful that I didn't have to step in very often in your place, because you really just did a phenomenal job every month of reporting out to everybody to know so that we all knew exactly where we stood in operations. So kudos to you for a great job, especially walking, you know, fresh. For someone new to the Board and having to take on the responsibility of chairmanship is, you know, a little intimidating, and you did an awesome job.
Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you very much, and thank you, Mrs. Allenson. Our next outgoing board member is Mrs. Erin Corso. Mrs. Corso has served on the Board of Education for the past four years. She has shared her experience and expertise as a lead school counselor, a teacher, and most of all, as the parent of four children in our school district. For the past two years, she has served as a chair of instructional committee and on the policy committee. Erin has shared some thought-provoking ideas, especially around instructional practices and policy development. Her observations as a parent with students currently in our school system has been invaluable. Thank you, Mrs. Corso. Superintendent Belizzi?
Mrs. Corso, it has been a pleasure getting to know you and working with you. Thank you for all of your work on the policy committee and chairing our instructional committee for us. That work that you've done with our policies is invaluable. So thank you so much for that dedication, because it helps to drive us as we move forward. So we appreciate it very much. I do look forward to continuing to work with you as a parent in the district, and maybe we'll see you on some other committees as we move through. But thank you so much for all of your dedication to us as well. The book I picked will be dedicated to, or will be housed in your honor, excuse me, at the Moses Wy Library. This is a book called Someone Builds the Dream, and this book highlights the many principles we strive to instill in students. It's about teamwork, hard work, the value of all careers. It's about someone building something and knowing what goes behind it, and that dedication and understanding how all of what we do is the result of many people's efforts and dreams to make things happen. So I want to thank you. I'll let you see this book, so you can take a look at it. The illustrations are also beautiful as well. And then, like I said, this will be at the Moses Wy Library. So thank you for all you have done.
Mrs. Castelli? So Erin, I just, you know, we all come to the board with different perspectives, and you opened my eyes to a lot of different opportunities to look at things a little differently. And I appreciate the fact that you were always willing to lay it out on the table and speak, you know, from your heart and from your mind exactly what you felt was in the best interest of students. And sometimes I wasn't in agreement with you, but after listening to your perspective, it made me pause and think that sometimes maybe I was wrong and you were right. So thank you for bringing your perspectives with a professional approach and honesty, and truly, it was obvious it came from your heart. Thanks so much, and I'm going to miss you. Mrs. Purcell?
Yeah. I want to say Erin ran the instructional committee, and I know Ms. Lavell always says thank you to Erin and to me, but she does like 99% of the work and does it very well. And I mean, the meetings, we had a lot to cover in those meetings, and a lot of policy, a lot of curriculum, and you did it very well. And I agree with Ms. Castelli. We didn't all agree sometimes, but I loved hearing what you had to say, and I loved the fact that you were open and honest and got it out there for us and made us really think about everything that came forward. So I really appreciate it, and I think you'll be a big loss to the board.
Other remarks? Mr. Votto?
Mrs. Corso, I'd also like to thank you for your contributions. As you know, I remember you as a quiet young lady in my CCD class. I'm happy to say that you're not so quiet anymore, because you've done a lot of good, stating your opinion on things, and you're a woman of conviction, and you're a person that should be very proud of yourself for what you've contributed to this board. Probably is because you had such a good CCD teacher.[1257.01][1257.01](laughter). In any case, I'm sure at this time, you're going to enjoy a little bit more time with your family, and I think it was a wise move in that respect, but we will miss you on the board. I know I will. Thank you.
Other board members' remarks? Thank you very much, Erin. You have been just a marvelous board member, and I appreciate everything that you've done.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your kind words. I certainly will miss being on the board, but I will be following what's going on and willing to volunteer as a parent on certain committees if there's openings. So keep me in mind. Thank you.
Careful what you wish for.[1314.01][1314.01](applause). The next outgoing board member is Mrs. Patty Purcell. Mrs. Patty Purcell has also served for four years as a Board of Education member. For the past two years, she has served as a vice chairperson of the Instructional Committee. She has, and she also was on the Food Service Committee. She has shared her experience and expertise as a retired teacher in our school district, a team mentor, and as a local, state, and national professional development presenter for teachers. Patty has shared insights and suggestions that she has gained working with various groups within our district and at the state level. Thank you so much, Mrs. Purcell. Mrs. Belizzi?
Thank you. Mrs. Purcell, it also has been wonderful working with you. I have really enjoyed getting to know you. I still remember the first time I met you at the first TCC committee meeting that I joined when I first was principal of Pontill. And so, you know, it has been wonderful to be able to involve our relationship and for me to get to know you on different levels as well. I really want to thank you, because you've given so much to this community as well, not only as a board member, but as a teacher, as a mentor, guiding those new teachers along the way and making sure everyone had what they needed to feel supported and be successful in this district. So thank you for that. I wish you all the best in the future and enjoying your time with your family. So thank you. The book I picked will be dedicated in your honor to the Mary G. Fritz Elementary School, and the book is called Out of My Heart. And so this is, this first book, it surrounds, it's about a character named Melody. And the first book was Out of My Mind from 2010, when it was published. And this book follows her now. She was in elementary school then. She's a middle schooler now, but it's about her taking brave steps and exploring new things at a summer camp and learning about her own personal growth and strengths as she moves through and experiences new things in life. So I think this book is going to, reminds me of you, and I think it'll be a wonderful addition to the library as well, in your honor. So thank you for all you've done for us.
Mrs. Allenson?
I just wanted to say, being a new board member, Patty had, like, my impression of you was that you were like a ray of sunshine, and when I heard your accent, I instantly knew that we were from the same place, which we are, California, northern. Okay, thank you. But more than that, I just had a huge appreciation for your attitude and your approach to various topics that we came up with along the way, and I thought that you were a wonderful positive influence, regardless of whether people were agreeing or disagreeing. You were just always really respectful about whatever the topic was, and I enjoyed working with you tremendously. So best of luck going forward. Maybe I'll see you on the town council someday.[1563.51][1563.51](laughter) And in any case, best of luck.
Other remarks from board members? Mrs. Castelli?
So Patty, I consider you not only just a board, you know, a colleague, but a friend. We've developed a great relationship over the past four years. I've always been able to bounce ideas off of you, and you've been stellar in helping me understand some things that maybe confused me a bit. And it was great that we had someone, I think for the first time in a long time, that was actually a prior teacher in the district. So you were able to bring that perspective to the board as well, and that really helped us discuss some topics that, you know, might not have come out the way they did if it wasn't for your input. So you're, I'm going to miss you so much. You were an invaluable asset to this team, and you're going to be missed. Good luck with your grandchildren. They definitely, as we both know, are the highlights of our life and need to take precedence, absolutely.
Other remarks? Mr. Votto?
Well, Patty, I'm going to miss you a great deal. You've made so many contributions to this board, and I think, as Kathy just pointed out and others, the fact that you taught in the system first, and of course, I knew you then as well, helped you make decisions, or at least share your opinion on things that came up with the board. You kind of gave us a different perspective of things. And I'm talking about now with all personnel, but especially with teachers. You proved many times, when you came up with ideas, that one of the most important things with this board, or any board, is to have a collaboration with the people you work with. And you need that collaboration, for instance, with the teachers, and you kind of helped bridge that, because you did know, or you brought up certain things that we might not have thought of, because you worked in the field, you worked with these people, and you knew certain things that we didn't know or could add to a discussion. And I think that was key, because again, we work in collaboration, and I think that's something we must always remember, and you made us remember that, because you did it. And I am truly going to miss you and your contribution to the board.
Other remarks from board members? Patty, go ahead.
I definitely have enjoyed my four years here, for sure. And I think what I've enjoyed the most, for me, is that every single person up here on the board is able to give their opinion honestly and feel safe enough to say what they think. Even if we disagree, we all were able to do it in an applied, respectful manner. And also, people had a mind, they opened their mind, and they really listened to what was going on here. And I didn't feel like it was some of the other political-type things that we see sometimes out in our country. I think we were all here for the right reason, for the students and what was best for students. And we took, you know, some blame from some people about some of the things we maybe chose to do, but we were strong and we were brave, and we talked it through. And some things, we had long, long conversations, but they're really good conversations. And I really appreciate the professionalism of everybody here and working with you, and I will miss you, for sure. And like Ms. Corso said, you know, I'm still in the community, and I'm still here. If people need to bounce an idea or add something, I'd If people need to bounce an idea or ask something, I definitely would be happy to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patty. Okay, well, the next person that's outgoing is me. I don't think I'm going to speak about myself, though, so I'll let that to others. Go ahead, Mrs. Belizzi.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Levak, I'd like to give a special thank you to you for dedicating 17 years to the families of Wallingford. Under your guidance, Wallingford Public Schools was fully renovated, reconfigured, and reconstructed to meet the ever-changing needs of our district. Your wisdom and attention to detail have made all of us better teachers and by extension, better parents and friends. We wish you the very best as you continue to serve your community in a new and different way. Thank you. Thank you for all the guidance you have given me and the support, especially from July 1 to now. I appreciate all of it. I have learned a tremendous amount, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
So we have a book dedicated, it's going to go to Parker Farms Library, and it's Jabari Jumps. And this book, the character is learning how to do something new and jump off a diving board. And he's nervous, but he's reassured by his father that he can do it, and it's okay to be nervous sometimes, but it's okay to take a chance and to try something different and do something new. So thank you for everything. We truly appreciate it. And so, this book will be at Parker Farms. There you go. We have lovely decorations now up here.
Okay, other remarks?
Oh, yes.
I knew that was coming.
Are you ready, Mrs. Levak?
Absolutely, Mr. Vado.
I had to write things down, so bear with me. Karen and I met many years ago when our adult special needs children were just toddlers at ACES. Those of us who share many of the same concerns associated with this create an everlasting bond. Time went by, and in 1999, we were once again in contact with one another, and this time it was on the Board of Education. Karen had been an incumbent for a few years, and now there was a new guy in the block. It was midway through a term, and I knew little of the procedures and the main topics of the day. That's when Karen took the chance to mentor me. I'm sure to this day, she is sorry for that. Since then, Karen left the board for a brief term or two, then decided to run again for office, and once again, we served together. Over the years, one of the biggest things Karen and I had in common was to always put our students first and to make decisions that were most beneficial for all students. Now, don't misunderstand. There were times we disagreed over certain issues and the decisions we had to make, but we were always able and willing to listen to each other. And there were also times when we had to join forces to get certain things accomplished that would benefit the entire district. When we needed to work for a common cause, regardless of party affiliation, we could easily put that aside and make the right decision and move forward and face the consequences of a decision together. Isn't that correct, Mrs. Levak?
Absolutely, Mr. Vado.
I believe those of us who have served on the board over the years can attest to two of Mrs. Levak's greatest attributes. Over the last 20 years, I have witnessed the most diligent reader of minutes and prospective curriculum. Oh, this is so much fun. As you may know, our first order of business at a committee meeting or regular board meeting is to approve the previous meeting's minutes. Whenever the motion came up to approve the minutes, every board member's head turned and looked at Karen. Guess whose hand always went up first before approving? Yep, our editor, genius in charge. Karen, being very cordial and polite, proceeded to point out misspellings, sentence syntax, lack of periods or too many, lack of commas or those inappropriately placed. Karen also deserves the distinction of being our Roberts Rule supervisor. Her famous line, "Excuse me, but it has to be done this way." Her famous last words, "If there's no other business of an official nature to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned." I hope I said that correctly. Well, Karen, I shall miss the phone calls that start well with, "Mikey, listen to this one." Or, "Mikey, what do you think about this?" On a serious note, I shall always appreciate the amount of time and effort you have given with each of your tenures on this Board of Education and the benefits that you have offered the children of our town. It has never gone unnoticed. On a personal note, I shall always be grateful and appreciative for respecting my many years on this board and the honor you showed me by running things by me or sharing a concern. We shall miss you, my friend, and I know all the board members, along with me, wish you the very best in the future.
Thank you very much. That's very nice. Mr. Vado and I do go way back. Further remarks?
Mrs. Levak, can I make a request that you take the box out of your basket and open it for us? There's a box in there. Is it very hard to untie?
I have no idea.
Might be able to.
Okay, hold on a minute. No problem.
She's probably got, wait, she probably has scissors in her purse.
I do.
Of course she does. I'm a Monty Hall.
I hate to cut the ribbon, but in the interest of brevity.
You will see why.
Okay. Uh-oh, we got another layer.
You might be able to just get the box.
I don't know. Okay. While I'm loving this, it's not on my diet, that's for sure. This is, all right.
You have to do it like a YouTuber, though. You have to be surprised every time you open something.
I do.
Oh, my gosh, guys, this is the unboxing.
Okay, but I don't know what it is. Oh, now we're in business. It's inscribed, Karen A. Levak, Board of Education, Wallingford Public Schools. It's a gavel. Very, very nice. Thank you so much.
Since we knew that you weren't really retiring, you were moving on to other duties, we thought that that might be fitting for you to use in your future roles and your future meetings, as well as finish tonight with. So thank you for everything. You've been an amazing mentor and friend.
Thank you very much. Any other remarks, Mrs. Purcell?
I just want to thank you also for your guidance. When I first started, you were very good to sit next to on the board because you kind of kept me going along, like, with the rules and what was going on and what was going on when and where. But I do, it's funny when Mr. Vado brought that up because my first introduction to Ms. Levak was, I gave her a curriculum, I don't know, a few hundred pages, and she handed it back to me with all the red marks on it. I was like, wow. This is a board member who read every single thing, and I loved it. But thank you very much. You've given a lot to the town and helped us all personally. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other further remarks? Mrs. Castelli?
Just real quick, I agree with everything that's been said, Karen. You just, you know, you did a phenomenal job. I'll take back my role now of reading the minutes and looking for those errors because I used to do it, but then when you took over, I was like, great, I don't have to do that anymore. But I just want to, one thing that will always stick with me is what I consider your famous quote, and that's, "Skip to your loo." So go skip to your loo, my dear, and have fun.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very, very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is an executive session. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussion of acceptance of retirements, discussion of appointment of candidates to teaching positions, and discussion of acceptance of resignations. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Raccio, seconded by Mrs. Allenson. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion has carried. We're in executive session. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stents, motion has carried. I'll entertain a motion for consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.38.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stents, motion has carried. No items removed from the consent agenda, so we're on to correspondence, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have several donations to talk about tonight. Acknowledging gift from three CPR units and schools training kits, each valued at $650. With some Neil Coleman Youth Marketing Director at the Connecticut American Heart Association. The value of these is $2,073.83. Another gift of handcrafted fidget blankets for students. This came from the Wallingford Alex Club on South Main Street. It went to the Highland School Occupational Therapists. Value is $900. Another gift of handcrafted fidget blankets for students from the, that's a repeat. Another gift from Neil Coleman Youth Market Director, Connecticut American Heart Association, to the High School for Health and Physical Education Department. And that's a gift valued at $2,073.83, and it's for three CPR and school training kits. I'd like to, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank these people for those donations. They will be greatly appreciated and used. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. We're on to committee reports, ACES Governing Board. The ACES Governing Board met on December 9, 2021. The minutes of the November 18, 2021 meeting were approved with corrections. Mr. Norm Hicks from RSD Number 13, chairperson of the ACES Governing Board from 2015 through 2021, was recognized for his many years of service as a governing board member and subsequently as the chairperson of the governing board. Mr. Hicks was presented with a commemorative chair emblazoned with the ACES logo. Karen Levak was recognized for her years of service as a governing board member and as the ACES Parent Association representative to the governing board. Mrs. Levak was presented with a beautiful bouquet of flowers. Both these individuals received a standing ovation. During the executive director's report, Mr. Rice shared the student artwork chosen for the ACES annual holiday contest. A small number of students attended the governing board meeting to receive recognition for their accomplishments. Dr. Danny He and Mr. Rice indicated that any occurrences at ACES related to school safety and security have been addressed, and school security has been heightened. Mrs. Rebecca Cuervas presented the early head start report. Ms. Cuervas reviewed the program design eligibility determination and verification process. Dr. Danny He shared information regarding the update on facilities. Chase has had some unanticipated maintenance costs. Dr. Danny He will meet with the mayor of Hampton to discuss the purchase of 670 Winter Green Avenue, which was the former site of the Winter Green Inter-District Magnet School. The site at 88 Bassett Road is planned to be used for special education students in the future. Mr. Cook presented the human resources report and indicated that there are 21 new staff members, 13 resignations, and seven leaves of absence. Mr. Cook further noted that 79 staff members are unvaccinated, and 93% of staff members have been vaccinated. The governing board approved the filing of the fiscal report, subject to audit, the human resources report, and the early head start updates. Mr. Rice presented the curriculum and instructional report. ACES intends to expand its secondary programming by providing a high school experience to the students enrolled in the ACES at Chase program. ACES has identified the 2022-23 school year as the intended start for the first ninth grade cohort. A COVID vaccine clinic for five- to 11-year-old children was held on November 19, 2021 for the first dose. A second clinic has been scheduled for December 10, 2021, to administer the second dose of the vaccine. Under old business, the nominating committee report was presented by Elizabeth Brown. The proposed slate of officers includes Susan Riccio, Orange Chairperson, Branda Georgi, Ansonia Vice Chairperson, Finance Chairperson Laura Harris from Derby, Executive Board Ethel Grant of Nogatuck, and one other governing board member. Under new business, the governing board approved the proposed ACES internal program calendar for 2022-23. The governing board also approved a tentative agreement between the Administrators Association and the ACES Board for the period July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025. This group of 34 employees will receive a 2.5% general wage increase each year. There will be an increase of 0.5% per year on the health insurance premiums culminating in a rate of 23.5% in the last year of the contract and a cap on longevity payments. The next ACES Governing Board meeting is scheduled for January 14, 2022. Moving on to business think tank, Mrs. Castelli.
So we are in the process of revamping the structure, so I'm going to refer over to Danielle for an update.
We are. I think our next meeting is scheduled in January because we're still in the process. Okay, so I'll look and see because I don't think we had gotten any notification as of yet as to when the next meeting will be.
Thank you. Next committee report is the STEM Steering Committee. Mrs. Allenson?
There was no meeting.
Okay. Systemwide PTAC update, Mrs. Latour.
Since our last Board of Education meeting, we have not had another systemwide PTAC meeting. It was supposed to be tomorrow night, but it was postponed until January.
Thank you. Special education PTAC update, Ms. Turner.
We met. We had a lovely presentation in the beginning of November. Ms. Debbie Silver from Texas, who is a nationally known speaker, came and spoke to parents and staff. We had over, there were 52 participants in the presentation, and it was amazing. It was really about how to support our children in recognizing their strengths and building on those strengths. We will, we're actually going to bring her back to a statewide conference in the fall, so we're really excited about that, and our staff will have an opportunity to go again. We are going to meet on January 5. That's our next meeting. We'll be going over the Special Education Department. Special Education Department Improvement Plan. We'll be going over information regarding student data and our plans for improvement this year, as well as a survey that we'll be handing to parents after PPTs. So that's something that will start beginning in January. After every PPT, we'll send out a survey to just make sure that the staff are really paying attention to parents and supporting students and parents the best that we can. We'll also be reviewing the welcome packet, so we'll have a lot of information at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Planet Conservation Development, Mr. Reynolds is not here to give us a report on that, so we'll move on to Food Services Strategic Plan Committee. Mr. Bondi or Ms. Purcell?
The Food Service Strategic Planning Committee met on December 15. We had two items on the agenda. The first one was a review of a breakfast questionnaire that we are going to send out to the principals once it's approved. And the second item was a review of the state equipment grant, and we decided which equipment items we would try to apply for in that grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bondi. I don't believe there's any old business to come before the board, so we're on to the Instructional Committee with Mrs. Corso and Mrs. Purcell, please.
Thank you. Quite a few retirements that I'm going to make motions about tonight, most of which are taking place for the end of the, are effective towards the end of the school year. So bear with me, there's quite a few. First, I make a motion that the Board of Ed accept the retirement of Renee Jurzick, effective June 30, 2020. Renee has been a special education teacher since September 1986, for a total of 36 years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Ms. Purcell, second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Ed accept the retirement of Denise Baker, effective June 30, 2022. Denise Baker has been a special education teacher since September 1984, for a total of 38 years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Ms. Purcell, second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Ed accept the retirement of Eileen Conklin Macri, effective June 30, 2020. Ms. Macri has been a special education teacher since August 1999, for a total of 23 years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Ms. Purcell, second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Excuse me?
Just a correction. You said 2020 instead of 2022.
Sorry. It's effective June 30, 2022. Sorry about that. Thanks for catching that. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Donna Richards, effective June 30, 2022. Donna Richards has been a special education teacher since August 2001, for a total of 21 years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Ms. Purcell, second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Patricia Taylor, effective June 30, 2022. Patricia Taylor has been a social studies and history teacher since September of 1999, for a total of 23 years in Wallingford Public Schools.
Ms. Purcell, second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Joan Reinhardt, effective June 30, 2022. Ms. Reinhardt has been a special education teacher since September of 1990, for a total of 32 years in Wallingford Public Schools.
Ms. Purcell, second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Julianne Bukowski, effective June 30, 2022. Julianne Bukowski has been an elementary teacher since September 1987, for a total of 35 years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Ms. Purcell, second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Jane Malone, effective June 30, 2022. Jane Malone was a special ed teacher from September 1983 through December 1989. She was also a special education teacher from August 1992 through June 1996, and then an elementary teacher since August 1997, for a total of 35 and a half years in Wallingford Public Schools.
Ms. Purcell, second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Next, I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Christine Friend, effective September 5, 2022. Ms. Friend has been a principal of Cook Elementary School since July 1, 2014, for a total of 8.2 years in Wallingford Public Schools.
Ms. Purcell, second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Next, I make a motion that the Board of Ed accept the retirement of Donna Curtis, effective July 26, 2022. Ms. Curtis has been speech and language pathologist and a special education department chairperson from August of 1996, and then a special education coordinator since July 2012, for a total of 26 years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Ms. Purcell, second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Deborah McMahon, effective January 4, 2023. Ms. McMahon has been a special education teacher since January 1989, for a total of 34 years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Ms. Purcell, second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, those motions carry, and we will celebrate these retirements for these teachers in the springtime, as is past practice. So congratulations to that group. They have a collective long time in education. I don't know if it hits 300 years, but I know it's over 200, so, oof. Okay, moving forward, candidates for teaching positions. I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following candidates to teaching positions for the 21-22 school year contingent upon proper certification as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. The WISE program, which is at Highland and Fritz Elementary Schools, a social worker Aubrey Lamb. At Mark T. Sheehan, a PE health teacher, Haley Kolsnick. And at Dager Recovery Teacher, Lisa Donadio.
Ms. Purcell, second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Resignations. I make a motion that the Board of Ed accept the resignation of Jason Torres, effective December 24, 2021. He has been a recovery teacher at Moran, a one-year contracted teacher since August 2021.
Ms. Purcell, second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And lastly, I make a motion that the Board of Ed accept the resignation of Marika Roman, effective January 14, 2022. She's been a special education teacher since May 2019.
Ms. Purcell, second to motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, those motions carry. Thank you, everybody. Moving on, we have some policy discussions, so I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Latour.
Thank you, Mrs. Corso. So this evening, this is the second read for all of these policies, and once again, I have to give a ton of credit to the Policy Committee. There are 31 policies that we're dealing with this evening for a second read. 12.4 through 12.11 are deletions of existing policies that are quite old. The first one is policy 4112.61, Privacy Officer, as well as the corresponding regulation. Does anyone have any concerns with the deletion of this policy? 12.5, deletion of GA Chapter 1, Comparability of Services. Any concerns or questions about the deletion of this policy? 12.6, deletion of policy GBA, Recruitment and Selection of Staff. This was a redundant policy to one that we're reviewing actually a little bit later on in the agenda. Any concerns with this policy? 12.7, policy GBBA, Job Descriptions, is up for deletion. Any concerns with the deletion of this policy? 12.8, deletion of policy GBCC, Adherence to Connecticut Interscholastic Conference Regulations. Any concerns with the deletion of this policy? 12.9, Presentation of Proposed Deletion of Policy GBE, Disabilities and Communicable and Infectious Diseases. Any concerns? 12.10, deletion of policy GCF, Professional Staff Orientation. Any concerns with the deletion of this policy? And 12.11, deletion of policy 4113.1, Formerly Known as GCJ, Load Scheduling Hours of Employment. Any concerns with the deletion of this policy? So the following policies are the second read for proposed revisions. The first one is policy GCKB, Professional Staff Meetings. We're going to just strictly recodify this policy. If you recall, at the instructional meeting at the beginning of December, we mistakenly listed this as a deletion. We're just going to recodify it, which will change to the number that it's supposed to be. Are there any concerns with the change of numbering of this policy? 12.13, Presentation of Revisions to New Policy 4111.34211.3, Minority Recruitment. Again, I would like to remind you, when it is two separate numbers, the way this policy is set up, it is dealing with both our certified and non-certified staff. I do have in my notes that we will provide an option to explain how to recruit diverse candidates. It wouldn't necessarily go in the policy, but we'll make sure that it's listed on our website how we do that. There were no other further edits recommended in our first read. Does anyone have any concerns with this policy the way it's written? 12.14, Revisions to Policy 4100, Certified Personnel. This was the combination of former policy GC and GCA. No further edits to the content of either policy were recommended, so the only changes to this policy were that they were combined into one policy. Any concerns or questions with this policy? 12.15, Presentation for Proposed Revisions to Policy 4111.2, Hiring Professional Staff, as well as the corresponding regulation 4111.2A, Administrative Regulations Regarding Hiring Professional Staff. We did separate out and take out the section for Option 2 and stayed with Option 1, as discussed by the Board, which provides the Superintendent of Schools the authorization to hire certified staff, including teachers, substitute teachers, and nurses, coaches authorized by the Board of Education. Administrators would still remain under the discretion of the Board of Education. So we removed the section, the second option for this policy. Any concerns with this policy the way it's written? The regulations, the edits that we made to the regulation were to align with the process that we utilize to date for the hiring of certified staff, and it also described our current policies, our current procedures for the hiring of administration. Any concerns or questions regarding the regulations regarding hiring professional staff? 12.16, Recruitment and Selection of Staff, 4111/4211. We did update Page 3. We rearranged the paragraphs under hiring of retired teachers per Mrs. Levak's request. Those changes were made in the draft. Does anyone have any concerns with the adjustments that were made to this policy for the second read? Next one, 12.17, Revisions to Policy 4112.5, 4212.5, Security Check and Fingerprinting. There weren't any changes recommended to this policy. However, there was a question regarding the difference between record check versus background check, and are they different? I spoke with Mrs. Sharon Bukowski, the Secretary in the Personnel Department, and she said the record check is a part of the background check, so they are two different things, but both are accomplished through the background check that Personnel does. Any concerns or questions regarding this policy? 12.18, Policy 4112.6, Personnel Records. No changes or edits were recommended after the first read. Any concerns for the second read for this policy? 12.19, Revisions to Policy 4112.61/4212.61, HIPAA Privacy Policy. This is, no changes were recommended after the first read for this policy. Any questions about the standing of this policy for the second read? 12.20, Revisions to Policy 4115, Evaluation and Support Program. No changes were recommended after the first read at the instructional meeting at the beginning of the month. Any questions or concerns about this policy?
I just had a question. I wasn't sure. It said by September 15, you have to report to the Board on the status of the evaluations. Is that the evaluation process, or is it like that, the overall evaluation of our teachers?
I think that's the evaluation process.
Process. Okay, thank you.
12.21, Revisions to Policy 4117.4, Dismissal Suspension Professional Staff. No changes were recommended after the first read for this policy. Does anyone have any concerns or questions about the second read? 12.22, Revisions to Policy 4118.5, 4218.5, Acceptable Computer Use. There were no changes recommended after the first read to either the policy or the regulation. Any questions or concerns regarding the second read? 12.23, Revisions to Policy 4118.6, 4218.6, Cellular Telephones. There were no changes recommended after the first read of this policy at the beginning of the month. Does anyone have any questions or concerns or changes being recommended for the second read of this policy? 12.24, Presentation of Proposed Revisions for Policy 4118.14, 4218.14. This is the policy and the corresponding regulation for nondiscrimination on the basis of disabilities. There were no recommended language changes for the policy. And then for the regulation, if you look on Page 4, I had to add Wallingford to Page 4, Part B, and that was accomplished through the revision process. Does anybody have any questions or concerns for the second read? 12.26, Proposed Revisions for Policy 4118.51, 4218.51, Social Media, and the corresponding regulation 4118.51A, 4218.51A. There were some... I'm out of order. Hold on. So there were not any changes recommended to the policy or the regulation for this particular one.
I do have, I have another question.
Sure.
There was, I wasn't sure how that, we ended up with it, but there was a thing about crowdfunding, whether we were allowing crowdfunding or whether we, allowing it with permission. There was like two choi, a choice, and I don't remember which way we went, or if we made a choice.
To be honest, I'd have to go back and watch the meeting, because there's about 1,000 policies swirling in my head at this point. But I will definitely check it before it gets on consent. So Mrs. Purcell is referring to Page 9, which the Board needs to discuss the crowdfunding language that they would like to use for Donors Choose, Kickstarter, GoFundMe, et cetera. So it's either allowing it or prohibiting it. And so for the prohibiting it, the language is fairly specific, just saying you can't do it. And then if the Board is going to allow for it, there is a short, brief paragraph regarding written procedures. So Mrs. Purcell, I'm not, you know, as I said, I'm going to have to go back and look at our minutes, and if we didn't talk about it specifically, because honestly, I can't remember if we did.
All right.
Then when we come together again, we'll have to just discuss which language we would like to use.
All right. And my two cents is I'd like them to be able to have the option to get permission, but I won't be there, so.
Okay. Does the Board feel like perhaps they want to decide that this evening? Does the board feel like perhaps they want to decide that this evening, so that it is all squared away before consent? It's fairly straightforward. You either are for it or against it, and if you're for it, they have the recommended language in terms of seeking permission, et cetera.
Let's do it tonight.
Let's do it tonight, okay. So I'd like to open it up for just some discussion about, again, if you look at your regulation, because it's in the regulation, not in the policy, and you look on page nine. So it speaks to the use of crowdfunding activities. So if you're thinking that you're in favor of it, if you don't mind, I'll just read it out loud. Prior to engaging in any crowdfunding activities, for the Board of Education, at schools, classes, or extracurricular teams, or clubs, an employee must first apply in writing to the building principal and receive approval for the crowdfunding activity. Such written application must include the name of the website or application to be utilized, a full description of the reason for the crowdfunding activity, a copy of the proposed personal profile to be listed on the site slash application, and the proposed content to be uploaded to the crowdfunding website or application, including images. Any money received from crowdfunding activities must be deposited directly into a school activity fund and may not first be received by the employee. Crowdfunding activities must comply with all Board of Education policies, regulations, and procedures, and shall not include photos of students or the sharing of any confidential student information. So if your thought process is that you would like teachers to be able to throw up a Donors Choose, or a Kickstarter, or a GoFundMe, that they would need to seek out the discretion and the permission from the building principal, they would need to have the specific criteria for what they're doing and why, and then any money from that goes through the school activity fund for tracking purposes and not into a personal account or subsidiary. If you're thinking, you know, mm, I'm not sure, I don't really think I like this, the section for prohibition on crowdfunding activities is much obviously shorter, and it just states, employees are prohibited from engaging in crowdfunding activities. Example, the use of websites or applications such as Donor Choose, Kickstarter, GoFundMe, et cetera, on behalf of the Board of Education, at schools, classes, or extracurricular teams or clubs. So it's fairly specific in just stating that, no, you cannot. Do you feel like you have enough information as a board to decide to state your opinion on either section? And would you like to go for discussion on the topic, if you would like to say something about either or?
So I do have a comment, Mrs. Corso.
Yes.
I'm fine with the crowdfunding idea. What I would like to see is, I'm even fine if the principals approve it, just how do we maintain consistency over like elementary schools? That one principal allows something, how do we know the others do that? So I guess if we go forward with this, could we add something about the crowdfunding gets recognized at a board meeting like this, like we do with donations, so that it's just very transparent about what's happening across the district? And that way, one school doesn't feel like, oh, we get to do it, and this principal doesn't want us to, or it's just, I could see it just becoming a little bit, there's not a lot of this now, but it could be dicey if there's different feelings about having to manage the activity fund and whatnot, school by school.
Okay, so similar to donations, in terms of even the cost or the amount, you would want it discussed at a board level to say, over a certain amount, it should come to the board, or are you suggesting any amount?
Not to necessarily approve it, but I guess, like, how would we know what's out there if it's not, if the central office isn't, doesn't have a hand in it at all? Right now, we know, because we see something out on Facebook.
Correct. So it could just be a part of a report?
I don't know, does anybody else have any ideas how to, how to maintain consistency?
Are you seeing like the correspondence, like how we read the donations, read it like as part of that?
Yeah, that would work, but that says, that's on the consent agenda for approval.
Right.
But if the principal's already approved it...
It's just a report.
It's just a report. We don't necessarily have to accept it.
So one thought would be to put it under administrative reports, just we would highlight it through there. That way, it's informational and not something that needs to go through the approval process.
Just transparency.
Does anybody have concerns with adding that part to the use of crowdfunding activities section, if the board ultimately decides to allow for crowdfunding? That it's reported out during administrative reports?
So I just want to make sure I'm clarifying this. This is crowdfunding for a specific item that a teacher's going to be using in his or her classroom. So, because the other one that goes around is the Amazon wishlist, and that's not, that's crowdsourcing for a whole bunch of different things that can be used in the classroom. So if we're, and those are specific items that get sent directly to the school in that teacher's name. So is that, how are we separating these two? Because when we're asking for donations, it goes into the school fund, does it go through now a bidding process? I mean...
I think that's on a future policy. We talked about it, but I think that might be in a list of future policies.
Like a good practice policy?
Yeah, we talked about raffles versus PTO contributions versus parent individual teacher contributions, and that's exactly what came up.
Mrs. Corso, are you talking about an Amazon wishlist that has like paper towels and Ziploc bags versus indoor recess games that you might see on a GoFundMe, or flexible seating, or I guess, I'm not as familiar, I'm going to be honest, with the Amazon wishlist part as I am with maybe a GoFundMe for a bigger, larger project.
So I think it's both. I think teachers are using the Amazon wishlist to put whatever they need in their classroom, or whatever they want for their classroom. I do think that, I think that we need to clarify that the majority of what goes on the list is teachers, on these lists, is very teacher-specific, and we do, as a district, provide the supplies that our teachers need in order to deliver their curriculum effectively. And the lists are just that, they are wish lists, because they're what teachers prefer to use, you know, above and beyond what is supplied to them. And I don't want to discourage people, because I've bought things off of wish lists and sent them directly to the school, so I don't want to discourage parents from, you know, donating. I just think if we're crowdfunding, that's a different level. You know, if you have a wish list, maybe we cap your wish list. These are things that are $25 or less, some, something, so that it's different than a crowdfund, where we're crowdfunding for like eight alternate seats, the big ball seats or something. I just think there needs to be a designation.
So are there, I would like you to consider then, as we take comments, if you put a price limit on something. So the box of Kleenex versus, you know, what we, the industrial Kleenex that you might find in a classroom. You know, the nice soft stuff, versus exactly what you said, big beanbag chairs, or, you know, the big exercise balls that kids can sit on. There's something to consider.
Ms. Allenson, did you have a thought?
I did. I under, is, in our, in my world at work, funding is more referred to as like financial and donation, like item donation is, or wishlist donation is not the same thing, because you wouldn't crowd, you wouldn't crowdsource like eight special chairs on Amazon, like somebody would give you money towards them most likely, because they're a little over the price point, or you, it would come from a business. So I would say, like, I don't want to discourage the past practice of item donation, especially like from the perspective of Amazon wishlist, and this is, in my opinion, crowdfunding is for larger items. So for items over such and such dollar amount, where crowdfunding would be used, here are the permissions. And of course, I don't know what said dollar amount should be, because everything in a classroom seems very expensive, so.
So I guess what I'm thinking about, or what I'm struck about what you shared, Ms. Allenson, is crowdfunding generally is a monetary donation versus an item donation, and those are two very different things. So potentially, the board could consider, under this section, defining the difference. And, you know, this part of this particular policy speaks directly to the crowdfunding aspect of it, so the monetary donation versus the item donation. That's not to say, Mrs. Raccio, that we might not need something for the item donation piece, especially specific to, there's a big difference between a box of tissues versus something else that might be a larger, more substantial item, but it's still an item in itself that could just be delivered to the school. I can look into, you know, model policies related to item donations. This is specifically towards the monetary piece, which is why the Student Activity Fund gets involved in the language to this, and there's a way to be very transparent and track where the money goes.
And I just want to bring the attention to, a lot of the crowdfunding happens in the clubs and the teams and the extracurriculars, and the things that go into the classroom, probably the building principals are aware of, but those types of things, they may not be so much aware of, so I'm glad that they would have to go get permission.
And I would say, in my experience as a building principal, and I've been out of the building for a couple of years now, the building principals aren't always aware of the crowdfunding things that occur within their own schools, you know, especially with Donors Choose and GoFundMe. So having something in policy form, if the board so desires, just to make sure that the building principal is aware, I think is a necessary step. So do you think you're ready to decide as a board, yes for crowdfunding, no, given that we'll kind of define it and speak specifically to the monetary donation piece, and then we will, I'll look again and report out next month at least about the item donation piece? Mr. Vado, I'm sorry.
Clarification, the, what Erin was talking about with the Amazon, you, does the principal need to know about that? Does that have to go through the principal?
I think, I think we were saying no at this point to that, but that yes to the crowdfunding, where they're asking for monetary donations. I also think, though, that that needs to be defined and regulated, because one principal says yes to this, and another principal says no.
Right, right.
It's a slippery slope.
Right, I don't disagree, but I think I would like an opportunity to go see what model policy is out there in relation to donation of actual items versus soliciting for donation of funds. So it, for this particular policy, because the monetary donation is sourced out through social media and websites, that's why it's encompassed in this policy, which I think it should stay there, we may need to, and I'll know next month, to have a completely separate policy about item donation.
So just put it on hold for now?
I would put the item donation on hold, but I would like you to decide about the crowdfunding piece for this particular one, so that we could put it to bed next month on consent. So maybe perhaps I could suggest that each board member just state what their opinion about crowdfunding monetary donations back to a teacher for said purpose, following the language in this model policy, if they're in favor of it?
Are we saying in favor with approval from the principal?
Correct.
Okay.
Using the language that's written here.
So in favor with approval from the principal, or not in favor at all whatsoever?
Correct. So yes, if you're in favor of it, no, if you're not.
Mrs. Purcell, you want to start?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, as modified, to be reported out.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
So I will definitely utilize the language here. I'll add that it should be reported out through the administrative report at our monthly board meetings, and then next month, I will come back to the board with information about item donation, which is separate.
Mrs. Latour?
Yes.
Since there's some members who won't be here next month, I just want to rewind a little bit and take the opportunity, since Mrs. Allenson is moving to town council, and Mrs. Belizian, Mr. Barum, you had the opportunity to sit there and have some town councilors say things like, when they look at the teacher's wishlist versus what they need in the classroom, it makes them pause that, why aren't we purchasing some of those things with our piles of money that we have? But it is just that, it's wants versus needs. And I know we've been in a very different time over the past two years, but, you know, some of the things that have been very popular, the ring lights, so when you're virtual teaching, you, I guess, don't have a shadow on your face, blue block glasses, those are things, and I've purchased things off of that website, off of Amazon wishlist for teachers too, mostly towards the instructional side, but, you know, teachers do use those things. However, we have no control over what they want versus what they may need that we already fund through our district funds. So I just want to throw that out there, that, you know, you may be seeing that in your future role.
I, I do also want to point out that sometimes with our piles of money, we have to go in the backyard and try to find it first, so it gets a little complicated.
I think I skipped, or in between, I lost track. So twelve point two five actually is policy four one one eight point two one, academic freedom, which there were changes recommended in the first read. If item number three, we added in a fair and unbiased manner to the end of the sentence, and a hyphen to number four for the word research-based, so those changes were made in four one one eight point two one. So I skipped that one by mistake, I apologize. Twelve point two seven is the prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace. The policy's four one one eight point one one two. This is the personnel version of Title IX. No additional recommendations were made at the December board instructional meeting for any changes or concerns to the policy or to the very lengthy regulation. Does anyone have any questions or concerns or changes that they would like to recommend at this time for either the policy or the, or the regulation? Twelve point two eight, proposed revisions to policy four one one eight point two three two, four two one eight point two three two, alcohol, tobacco, and drug-free workplace. No recommended changes were made after the first read. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, or changes they would like to recommend for the second read? And then the last one for this evening is proposed revisions to policy four one one eight point two three three, four two one eight point two three three, weapons and dangerous instruments. No changes to language were recommended after the instructional meeting in December. Does anyone have any recommended changes or concerns that they might have for the second read for that policy? Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Latour. Back to you, Mrs. Levesque.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. Corso and Mrs. Purcell, for the great job that you've done in running the instructional committee meetings during this term. Thank you.
Efficiency, my motto.
The next reports are the Operations Committee, Mrs. Allenson and Mrs. Castelli, please.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Chair. We called the meeting to order just a little late, I think it was seven minutes late, on Monday, December thirteenth, 2021. We started off with approving the minutes, then we went to public comment, of which there was none. We then discussed several items and came to consensus on a few. So first consensus was on the reported surplus of 1.073 million dollars. It was a downward change in the amount of the surplus, driven by increases in tuitions and excess cost estimates. Again, these items will continue to fluctuate, as it is very early in the year. The next three items we went over were the budget transfer request, which went to town council and was kicked back to us to take it out of our COVID funds, which we basically discussed. We talked about the many... We talked about the many items, which included many energy efficiency items, continuing that project that we had started already, security vestibules, and various technological And then we ended with a summary of the 2% funds. Apologies, I did not write down the balance after the proposed changes. Cafeteria reports with Mr. Bondi. We finished the month with a $263,000 projected surplus. We had increase in participation, it continues to rise as we mitigate ongoing food shortages, then stocking up as much as possible as we anticipate future shortages, although we are not hoarding, we're just making good decisions so that we don't have to change the menu around too much and drive the cafeteria staff crazy. Next, we talked with Mr. Deptula about projects. We had some discussion and evaluated the need for a tracker to demonstrate the length of time for bid review to assignment. Mr. Deptula said it's not so much bidding that makes the process slow, it's more the timing of projects, which is limited because we can't do things while students are in the building for many of these. Moving on to item D, we talked about the 2022-2023 school calendar, which was approved. I am happy to say that the first day of school is no longer on my birthday, which it will be the day after my birthday on September 1st, and the last day of school will be 6:14, provided there are no snow days. Finally, we reviewed the COVID grants and their projected expiry dates, talked about how we're using some of those funds. The grant's total, about 7.1 million? Yes, 7, I was rounding, and I was, I was just curious that I did it right. 7.099 million, to be exact. We then talked about the two high school project, which turned into an every-school project evaluation. There were some changes, again, to what the state is asking us to do, so they want us to do a full evaluation of all of the schools. We took consensus to do a full nine-year study of eight, eight-year study of all school enrollment, and that would be step one of the new process, as requested by the state. We adjourned at about 8:33, and that is it for me. Back to you.
I do want to make one comment about that. I know it's too late now, and I'm sorry that I missed this when I reviewed the agenda for tonight, but it had been requested at the operations meeting that we move forward with an approval of the funding that we'll need for that eight years of enrollment projection that the state requires. We wanted to do that at tonight's meeting, which now we can't because it's not on the agenda, unless it's Karen, is there a way we can do that?
It's a regular, you know, it's, it's a board meeting, so I believe we could add it to the agenda.
Make a motion to amend the agenda?
I'll make a motion to amend, oh my God, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to include an item about funding the eight years of enrollment projection that is needed to satisfy the state.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to amend, to include that item. Discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair, can I just clarify that it would be 13.2 under operations, and I believe, Mrs. Castelli, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe that we took, like, an unofficial consensus, because it was a committee meeting?
Yes.
And at the cost was somewhere between 175, and I don't remember the cap, but we agreed to use the 2% balance for that.
Correct.
Okay, so whatever that cap was, Mrs. Belizzi, I'm not trying to figure that out.
I think we said, I think we said it was between 175 and like 225.
Yes, that's what I remember.
Is that what I remembered?
Again, it was an approximate, it was an estimate.
It was an estimate, well, just for the general public, that this isn't a $10,000 little consulting job, this is the real deal.
Absolutely.
All right, so first we're going to take a motion, we're going to vote on the motion to amend the agenda, then we'll have a motion to that. So discussion on the motion to amend the agenda? All right, seeing no discussion. All those in favor of amending the agenda to include this item signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? All right, now we need to craft exactly what this motion will be regarding funding of this item. So I'm open to suggestions.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the necessary funding estimated to be between 175,000 and 225,000, estimated, could be more, could be a little less, we don't know, and to use our funding from the 2% account, which presently has about 100, a million, million point two in it, so there's enough funding there to handle this, and actually, it's, we have about 600,000 left from our COVID fund, so it could come out of that. So out of the 2% account, let me, let me, let me just start this all over now that my thought process is, all right, I make a motion that we approve, the Board of Ed approve.
Funding a dollar amount, that might be helpful.
Would you say what?
If we could just include a dollar amount.
Don't include it or do include it?
Do include it.
Okay.
Maybe say something like up to $225,000 or $250,000 funding.
Well, do we, do we have a cap?
Mr. Barone is waving his hand.
Mr. Barone, did you have?
Oh, we'd have to do a bid for that? I didn't realize.
Oh, yes, it's over the amount.
Okay.
Right, don't put a number on it, we'll just do a bid.
So then, so then the motion would be to?
Mr. Barone, we're getting blinking lights here. Can you come to the microphone? I'm sorry. The door's going to open and they're going to yell at us.
And we don't want that.
So if we just want to put a bid out, I don't believe we would need a motion, we could just put a bid out, and then when we get the results, we could come back and say, we need X to do the project.
All right, so we'll just make a motion to put the bid out for the?
We don't need to make that motion.
We don't need a motion for that.
We don't need a formal motion for this?
I don't believe for the bid, no, I think we would need it for funding to move forward.
Right, but just so we're, so.
Let's say a bid at $2 million, then we make a motion not to do it. So that's why I think it's good that we do the bidding first.
You, right. We need, but we need to establish what the parameters are for this, correct?
Oh, I.
The eight-year.
Okay, so you want to establish the parameters on what?
So wait, so Mark. Mark, when you, you do a lot of putting out things for bid, right? Come to the microphone, please. Help us out here. So you, we have things on our strategic plan, like, let's say it's, it's an oil tank, and you, we, you have to go out and get funding for, a bid for that. What's, you don't come to the board first and ask us anything?
No, Town Hall will put a bid out, and we don't necessarily need to award it. We're putting one out right now for a job that we may or may not do, but that's what Dominic's talking about, there's no reason you can't do that. You don't need any board approval or anything.
Okay.
This particular bid, there's not a lot of time that we'll be involved in developing that, there's already templates for this exact process that the state is asking us to do now.
Okay.
So it shouldn't take a lot of resource to get this bid up.
Okay, so we don't need a motion?
That's fine, we, we added this to the agenda so that we could discuss it, so we did.
And we, did we, didn't we, we didn't do a?
All right, Mrs. Corso.
Just regarding parameters, I think we should allow the administrators who met with the state and knows what the state's asking for to define those parameters that should be included in the bid.
I agree.
Yes.
I agree.
Good point, Erin.
Have at it.
Mr. Vado, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I was at the operations meeting, I'm not sure if it was discussed, how long of a process is this, did they say?
No.
They didn't?
They did not, no. So they basically, I shared what we had already done to this point. Their discussion back with us was the guidance that we needed to basically start over and include our pre-K through 2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 12, all of the schools, do an enrollment and an architectural study of all of the schools, and then come back. They basically said that the information we get back from the study will tell us what the next steps would be in terms of, because I specifically talked about the high schools to start, and they shared that the data would guide our decisions, so that we need the data to be able to make those decisions and determine the next steps. So for us, when we talked about it at the operations committee meeting, it was a discussion of exactly that, and then what our next steps would be. We do not need consensus to go out to bid, so we could create the bids and then come back once we get that information back, and then determine what our next steps would be in terms of funding and how much that would cost exactly.
So there are actual organizations or businesses that do this sort of thing?
Correct. And it may, you know, yes.
And it sounds to me like the end, their end objective is to see whether we need one high school or two high schools.
Agreed.
That's what they're trying to figure out, right? If we have what our enrollments are.
Agreed, and that's where the eight-year study had come from, that we need to track the enrollment, because it starts from the, basically from the pre-K all the way up. So to be able to track it and see where we are, and then see what our needs will be moving forward.
So, but again, we don't have an idea how long this would take, once we, let's say the bid is accepted or whatever.
No.
We don't know.
No.
Okay.
Further discussion on this agenda item? No? All right, well, you know what the desire of the board is, and we've added this to the agenda.
I think that is for operations.
That's it for operations.
All right, well, thank you, Mrs. Allinson and Mrs. Castelli, for your work on the Operations Committee.
Do you want to, do we need to withdraw the motion?
No, let's, let's talk about, we, yes, it was added to the agenda, because otherwise we wouldn't really be allowed to discuss it, so, okay. All right, we're on to the administrative report. Superintendent Belizzi?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to recognize and thank all of our staff, our administrators, our central office staff, Dave Bryant, and the Wallingford Police Department, for everyone's hard work and dedication and collaboration with navigating through the events of last Thursday and Friday. Together, we'll ensure that our places, our schools, our places where all our students feel safe and supported. I'd also like to share how proud we are of our students who reported behaviors to their parents, administrators, teachers, to keep us aware and let us know what was happening. So it helped us investigate and move forward with next steps. So while we did see some high absences in terms of certified staff, students, district-wide, we still had a very successful two days. Today, during our regularly scheduled meeting with our administrators, we did take an opportunity to review all of our safety schools, all of our school safety protocols. Collectively, we reviewed warning signs, reporting practices, practice drills, and other safety measures that we employ on a daily basis to keep our students and staff safe. So we will continue to revisit those and continue to make sure that we are doing the best we can as a district to stay on top of everything that's being reported. I also wanted to take an opportunity just to give you some updates in regards to our COVID cases. So as you know, our main goal is to continue to keep all of our students learning in person. We have seen a rise in cases over the past few weeks. Today, by 5 o'clock, we were up to, just reported today, 21 positive cases, and we had four over the weekend. So by the end of today, we already had 25. So we're going to continue to monitor the number of cases we have, continue to employ all of those mitigation strategies, encourage families and staff to stay home if they're not feeling well, and to get tested, so we can continue to keep our students safe and keep them in, in school. We have found that the Screen and Stay initiative has helped us to keep our students in person, but that is something that we'll continue to monitor as we go through and continue to have, you know, meetings with Kathy Nealon, our nursing coordinator, and Steve Savitelli in terms of discussion around Screen and Stay and the viability based on the number of cases. I also want to highlight that with Screen and Stay, I know there was lots of discussion regarding it at the elementary level, particularly where it, where we have staff that attend the YMCA program. So our before and after care programs are not part of the Screen and Stay initiative. For the state, they cannot be, they, the YMC program is under the Office of Early Childhood, and Screen and Stay is not an option for those programs. So I do know, in working and collaborating with Sean Doherty, that is something that he is continuing to message out to families as well, that the goal is to keep the students in class, in the classrooms. And the last thing is also another thank you to our administrators, nursing staff, and our health office assistants for their tireless efforts with the contact tracing. They are working during the day, they are working after hours, and on the weekends to make sure that they are providing our families with up-to-date information in terms of whether or not their child has been considered a close contact, whether or not they can screen and stay. And so I just want to make sure that we highlight for that and well, to say thank you, because it is a lot of work, and it's to be, to be honored for them, because they are really spending a lot of time focusing in on answering questions for our families, providing them with information as to where to get their children tested, when they can come back, and any other specific questions that they may have during this process. And then last, I just want to wish everybody a lovely break. I want to say a special thank you to our four board members who have been with us and are moving on, and I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday break and takes this time to rest and recoup for the new year.
Thank you, Superintendent Belizzi. We're on to announcements. On Monday, January 3, 2022, there'll be a swearing-in ceremony for our newly elected officials at the Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers at 6:30 p.m. On Monday, January 3, 2022, there'll be a special Board of Education meeting in Room 220 of Town Hall at 6:45 p.m. On Wednesday, January 5, 2022, there'll be a Board of Education orientation meeting at the Board of Education Conference Room, 100 South Turnpike Road, at 6 p.m. On Monday, January 10, 2022, there'll be an instructional committee meeting via Google Meet at 6 p.m. On Wednesday, January 19, 2022, there'll be a special operations committee meeting via Google Meet at 6 p.m. And the date of the next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Monday, January 24, 2022, in the Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers at 6:30 p.m. On behalf of the board, have a wonderful holiday season and a happy and healthy new year, and for Mr. Vado's benefit, if there is no further business of an official nature...
Mrs. Castelli?
I'm sorry, I just, I do want to say this. This being our last Board of Ed meeting before the, the holiday break, I want to extend my personal thanks to all staff, every, every staff member in our district for all their hard work and the dedication that they have to the students and to the staff. And I also have an extra special thank you to the teachers. I found this card when I was doing some card shopping, and I love it, and I said I have to buy it and I have to share it, because I think it says a lot and comes from my heart. Teacher, add up all the lights on the Christmas tree, plus all the snowflakes and a snowman, plus all the stripes on every candy cane there ever was. That still would not equal the thanks you deserve. Merry Christmas to all our teachers, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Castelli, for sharing that sentiment. If there is no further business of an official nature, to come before the Board of Education... If there is no further business of an official nature, to come before the Board of Education this evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion as carried, thank you very much, good night.
Happy holidays.